We're gonna go ahead and get started. The first item that we need to address tonight is the public hearing. So on item, section 425, sign regulations, we'll address that first. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. As a preliminary matter, I would ask that the public hearing notice that was published in the Warren County record be made a part of, be made a part of the record by reference, and also a copy of Jack's Planning and Zoning Report, Jack Camp's Planning and Zoning Report, the public hearing notice, and the attached provisions to the sign code be made a part of the record by reference, and finally, a copy of the code of the city of Warrenton be made a copy of the record by reference. What we have tonight on for an amendment is to our sign code. This is kind of a, seems as though our sign code is something organic that will always be worked on and never perfected. This is kind of a follow-up to some of the practical issues that have come up recently with our sign code. For example, the 90-day limitation on the, what was formerly known as real estate signs, but the real estate size sign that has created some issues for real estate agents listing properties in the community. So there is, it's eliminating that, and it'll also eliminate some of the burden on staff to try to police that, which is somewhat impractical. It also puts, we've had some issues with regards to the banner signs as well, and also regarding the, I can't think of the word. The banner signs and the signs that are, the height of some of the signs regarding some of the properties here in town. So these revisions are in here. I can go over them individually if you have any questions. This was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission with a 5-0 vote. There were four absent and one abstention for that meeting on July 3rd, 2014. Canopy signs, that's what I was trying to remember. Is there any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. Yeah, I've had a number of phone calls from an individual who has a piece of property on Main Street, and they have a canopy, and they have been restricted, as I understand, from putting a sign on the canopy and using it. And I think it's related to height. Is this gonna fix their issue, or are you aware of their issue?
Yes. That was the exact issue we were talking about, if you're talking about up the street, that it was just an impractical kind of height limitation regarding the canopy compared to other parts of our code. So this will fix that issue, those are the things that were addressed.
Will they be required then to get their sign approved, or?
Yes.
Do they still have to go through PNC?
The, it'll probably just be a sign permit, but I would ask Jack about that, and he's not here.
Okay.
But they'll have to bring it into compliance with the code, but obviously, that height limitation, especially on that particular building, didn't make sense. So that was one of the suggestions that was kind of generated by some of the members of Planning and Zoning. Jack worked on it, brought it back, and we're bringing it to you guys. Any questions?
You're right about the sign issue being an ongoing process. I think every 90 days, for example, it appears to me that way.
Anytime I go through the code now, I just try to skip over that section, because I've read it so many times recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any, one in the audience that would want to address the issue, the sign issue, either for or against? If so, please come to the podium at this time and give us your name. Come forward, and your nature of your business.
Hi, I'm Lloyd Wyman, I'm Clutch Defense, and I was one of the business that the canopy previous, it affected. So I just wanna say thank you for listening to our concerns. It's gonna help not just my business, but other businesses in the community, and I greatly appreciate all the effort that you put forth to make it where we can do business here. Our tax dollars need to be spent here and help out the municipalities. We're happy that you guys took the right move. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else want to address that issue? Not hearing from anyone, and we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. And at this time, I'll open the Board of Aldermen meeting for the city of Warrenton on July 15th, 2014. Since we have some veterans in the audience, I'm gonna ask one of them to lead us into the pledge of allegiance. All right. Those who are in pants, salute. I pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ready to? Thank you, Counselor. On the agenda, I do wanna make a change on item 9B, Employee Uniform Pant Bed. I wanted to delete that, and we'll table that and discuss that at the next meeting. First item on agenda, item three is approval.
C?
Pardon me?
And C?
No, just C.
Just C, not B.
Not B is the pants, C is the shirts.
Do you want shirts or pants?
Shirts.
Shirts on?
Shirts on.
Okay.
Pants on.
The pants are still on.
Sorry, I couldn't help it.
Okay, not good. I was, I was, I got the wrong landmark. So we're gonna delete item 9C, Employee Shirt Bed. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
You couldn't see her, that's why.
No, I couldn't. Item 3A, Approval of Minutes. First one is Executive Session Minutes from June 17th, 2014.
I make a motion to approve the executive minutes from June 17th, 2014.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Sluter, to approve the executive session minutes from June 17th, 2014. Any discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alda Person Kestrel?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one absent. Item 3B, Regular Board Meeting Minutes from July 1st, 2014.
Make a motion that we approve the regular board meeting minutes from July 1st, 2014.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kestrel, seconded by Alderman Dyer, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from July 1st, 2014. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sluter?
Didn't appear, I'm saying.
Alda Person Kestrel?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Abstaining, I was not present.
Alderman Dyer?
Yes.
Motion carried 3 to 0 with two abstentions. Item four, Hearing from the Public. At this time, we always extend a courtesy to anybody in the audience that would like to address the Board of Aldermen. If you would like to, we ask that you come forward at this time, state your name, and limit your remarks to five minutes or less. So, anyone like to address the Board?
Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, my name is Stan Shelton. I've come before you before. About two years ago, I came to you telling you I was gonna do a petition drive and did that. But I also mentioned at that time, there was a problem between the city and its employees. In the last two years, what I know of is two employees have been fired and have sued the city, and there's been a settlement with those. In the last two months, what I've heard is a athletic director, whatever, came to a resolution that she's no longer working for the city. Why, I don't understand. If my facts are wrong, I'd like to know. That she was given 26 weeks of severance pay to go away. I think this is a waste of city taxpayers' money. You have two employees that were fired. If they were fired for just cause, why not stick with it besides a settlement? And I'm sure you had to vote on it to accept whatever the insurance was gonna give them, if that's correct. And I just see that it's a waste of money that we're doing this. The city of St. Peters, in the last 10 years, has not fired anybody except for drug and And to look back at our city and what's happened in the last 10 years, there's been a lot of firings, a lot of people quit, and I think we're wasting our money there, that something needs to change. And I bring up the drug and alcohol, I also understand, and tell me if I'm wrong, that it, is it city's policy, if an employee gets a DWI, that they're still allowed to drive the city vehicles? And if that's so, I think it's putting the city at risk. My friend's mayor of Overland, and he said they would not allow that. While the person fights the DWI, would not be allowed to drive the company vehicle. And I don't know if that's a true fact or not, and I'd just like to throw that out there. Do whatever you want with it, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Anyone else like to address the Board? Not hearing from anyone, then we're gonna move on down, and I'll extend the same courtesy to the Board of Aldermen, that if any of the Board members want to address the public, we'll do so at this time. And I think I'll start down here with Alderman Dyer. Anything for the citizens? Alderman Sluter?
Not at this time, sir.
All right. Are you gonna report on your recreational meeting, or you wanna do that later?
I was gonna actually wait till later, but that's fine. If you're gonna do it now, it's fine. It was a great turnout. I think it was positive in every way. I think people were really receptive to starting a new direction and trying something different than what we were doing. I haven't heard anything negative yet. In fact, we had a lot of people come up to us after the meeting and encourage us that they were glad to see that we are doing something out there to change. So, it was really positive.
Alderman Kestrel?
I'd like just to make a general statement in that I wish it was possible for the Board of Aldermen to actually explain the decisions that are made in executive session. Because if we could, it would make a big difference on how people perceive some of the decisions that have been discussed here already, and most likely, people would agree with how the city has acted regarding those decisions. But unfortunately, we cannot address those, because those are in executive session, and those are personnel issues. So, I wish we could. I hope the people that trusted us to put us on this board and know us as individuals who live in this community, go to church with those people, and have probably known a lot of the people who are no longer with the city most of their lives, they are not easy decisions. Not one of those decisions are ever taken lightly.
Alderman Clark?
Nothing.
Nothing. Alderman Ock?
Yeah, I'm gonna pass.
You're gonna pass?
Yeah.
The mayor gets the same courtesy as the Aldermen. I have a couple things I wanna bring up. One thing I wanna schedule is a work session, since we've got like three weeks here before our next meeting. I got about four items that I would like to have a work session to discuss. Most of those items involve the, our relationship with the neighboring city, Truesdale, and some things that we're dealing back and forth with them. So I've got the 29th of July as a tentative date, so how's the Board feel about that? That work for you?
That's a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I will not be able to make it.
I will not be able to make it either.
Works for me.
You will? Alderman Dyer?
Tuesday. I wouldn't be able to make it Tuesday.
You won't be able to?
No, Tuesday.
Okay. But, so my other date would be, my alternate date would be, what was that alternate date, Terry?
I think it was the week before on Tuesday, wasn't it?
Yes.
22nd?
22nd. How's that sound for y'all?
I can do that.
I can do that.
All right. I'm liking that. Alderman Clark?
I'm looking.
Yes?
I'm good.
And what time?
6 o'clock? Is that crowded?
Works for me.
Okay. All right. I think we'll, I think we'll go ahead and schedule that for 6 o'clock on the 22nd of July.
Terry, can you send us an invite to that?
Yes, ma'am.
While we're discussing dates, I will not be at the next board meeting.
At the next board meeting?
Right.
Mel, did you hear that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One of the other things I wanna mention, I wanna, on behalf of the city, I wanna extend our sympathy and condolences to Michelle Slinter and her family on the recent passing of her father. And that's why Michelle's not here tonight. I think the funeral service was today.
Yes.
So, the other thing I wanna share with the public, only 20 more days of political science. Every day, we get called. When I say "we," poor Jack Camp gets calls about political science. And you know who calls him? The opponent. It's like junior high all over again. Sally's sign is too close to her other sign. Or Billy's sign is too big. So 20 more, 20 more days, and they'll disappear as fast as they came. So if the public can be patient, we'll be in good shape. Stopped at the farmer's market today, busy. Very impressed with the number of vendors and how many people were there. Sweet corns in, and they were doing a giant business. So we were, I was pleased to see that. The other thing I wanted to mention, last week, the Greater Economic Development Council hosted a meeting, and I was able to attend that. One of the things, I clipped out of the St. Louis Business Journal, and I'll share this with the public, all the Board members have a copy. This is a full-page ad in the St. Louis Business Journal on the, on what they've done and who they've attracted to the area and so forth. It was pretty impressive. I was surprised that that many companies have relocated and done business here. The other thing I wanna mention, they also issued a press release that, one of the things they continually heard from manufacturing companies in the area was that they have trouble getting welders, certified welders. They all kinda complained that that's a high priority item, and they needed some help with that. So the Economic Development Council has a, set up a deal with the St. Charles Community College in the Wright City School District, that they're going to go ahead and start a welding school to certify welders. Warrenton is going to follow up on that. I think it's, what did I see? It was a 20, 20-week, yeah, 20-week training program. And so, as soon as that one gets up and running, and that one's going to start this summer yet, Warrenton's gonna do the same thing, and I think they're gonna partner up with East Central Junior College and do a 20-week certified welding program. Kind of a cold deal. The other, just of the meeting with the Economic Development Council, they invited MoDOT and to give a report on the 3/4 cent sales tax that's on the ballot here on the 5th of August. Pretty much gave the same program that Eric Maniga gave us here a week or two ago, asking for the public support. The only difference was they had, Paula Goff was there, and she's the Northeast District Engineer that has a 17-county area, and then the State Engineer was there. First name's Ed, and I can't remember his last name, but they basically were promoting the same issue as what Eric Maniga reported us. One of my concerns was that on the priority list, if this does pass, they had a long list of things, and one of the things that was on there was redoing the overpass here in Warrenton. If it passes and I-70 goes to a six-lane program, that got scratched. Didn't give us a good reason why. And the other thing was the overpass at Highway A and B, we call it the Flying J overpass, that was to be redone, and that was on a list, and that got scratched. MoDOT didn't, they just said, you know, we have to pick and choose, we're only gonna have so much money, and those were items that we thought we could, we could do without. So I wasn't real enthused about that. I was hoping that that would've been left on there. So, I did wanna share that with you.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, you know, I thought it was interesting, I asked Terry what does 3/4 cent sales tax means to the city of Warrenton, and it means a million, a million, over a million, it was a million-one, of sales tax to be collected for this project. And now we hear the scrapping of these projects. So, you know, I know we can't take positions and encourage one way or the other, but I think voters need to think about a million-one going out of this community and what's going back in.
Good point. Good point. And there were some good questions that were asked, and MoDOT pretty much told us, you know, their job wasn't to be in marketing. Their job is to build highways and present the facts to the public, and they did. I give them credit for that, but they didn't really answer our questions, I didn't think. So, the other thing they did talk about, a couple things on the Greater Economic Development Council. We were in, our county was in the running for a big project. We were down to the final two, and we lost out to our neighbor to the west. Montgomery County got it. 500 jobs is gonna be with this company, so I think we'll benefit. Not everybody's gonna live in Montgomery County. Some of the people's gonna live here, some of the people shop here, so we'll all benefit, and we wish them the best of luck. They did say they had 15 companies in the pipeline. That's kind of a terminology the economic development people use. When they get in the pipeline, it doesn't mean they just called or showed a little interest. It means they've gone through all the steps, they've been to the community, they've told us what they wanted, they've evaluated it and so forth, so some good things are coming. Warrenton, Warren County, I might get in trouble for spilling too much of this. Warren County is also in the running. We're one of two finalists for another large company, larger than Certainty. Hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna be the finalists and land that one. The other thing I might mention to you, we, there is a retail store that's looked at coming to the city of Warrenton. I talked to the owners of the property today, and they said everything is done except agreeing upon the price or the sale of the property. So, he thought that within the next month, we would know whether that's gonna be a final deal or not. So, as most of you know, we live off a sales tax here. The city operates off a sales tax. So retail is good for us, but we understand manufacturing is the big person in the picture, and that's what creates jobs and rooftop. So, anyway, that's about all I've got to say. And with that, unless someone's got a question or concern?
Just going back, I know it's kinda going back on it, but Chief, I got a citizen who sought me out this week and gave major compliments to Officer Tweet, just the way he handled the situation. So impressed that he sought me out, so I thought that needed to be passed along.
Terry, good, thank you. Good. I'm gonna move on down. We've got the work session scheduled. We've got a group of people here, and the title on our agenda says Tribute to Veterans' Memorial Project. Tom Carter, Rick Mantiohn. And I'll tell the Board what I know about this project. About two years ago, I visited with, it might've been longer, I'm not sure. Tom Carter came by my office to visit me one day, and he told me they had a thought and they were working on a project. And the project involved giving recognition to soldiers that are from Warren County that lost their lives in various wars from World War I all the way up to present time. Really didn't have anything on paper, but wasn't even sure where it was gonna go or anything, but just asked for my opinion on it, and I thought it was a great, great plan and a great program. So, over a two-year period, I think it's, came about, it's on paper now. I think it's being engineered out. There's a location. So I'm gonna ask one or all of these gentlemen to give the Board a little address on what's going on. Rick, you wanna start it off?
Oh, yeah, I guess so.
This is Rick Mantiohn.
Pleased to meet you all. I would like to thank you all for inviting us to make this presentation. I'd like to thank Mayor Dyer and the county commissioners for being a part of this and the coverage we've been getting from Tim since three and a half years ago. My name is Rick Mantiohn, I'm with the VFW in Warrenton, 2180. Before I start this presentation, I want you to understand that we are all a team. We are all co-equals. We're working together. I'd like for the people that are working on this team to stand up, if you're in this room. Please stand up. I think we're, I think we're a pretty good cross-section of the community. We have representatives from the American Legion, the VFW, the Marine Corps League, the Elks Club, and private citizens, business people, current military, and Major Quilting Lady and VFW Auxiliary. Why don't you just tell the council your name and who you are?
I'll start. My name is Tom Carter, I'm the VFW here in Warrenton, 2180. Pleased to be here today.
My name's Bill Savette, I'm a founder of the Marine Corps League here in Warrenton.
My name is Tom Watts, I'm a former master of the Marine Corps. We go to the here in Warrenton.
I'm Mike Pocket, I'm a Elk member of Warrenton 2662, and Second Officer.
I'm Rick Atkins, I'm a member of the VFW in Warrenton, I'm also currently serving with the Army Reserve.
I'm Rosie Porter from Long Island Street, and also probably the folks about.
I'm Lloyd Wyman, owner of Clutch Defense.
Thank you very much. So, this is only part of our team. We have several others that couldn't make it tonight, but you can see these are high-quality people. We're equals, we work together, we are a team, and we are gonna do this. We are gonna get this done. Now, this is called a Tribute to Veterans Memorial, but very specifically, it's for the people who gave the ultimate sacrifice in this community. The KIA's killed in action, POWs, and the MIA's missing in action. Now, this design evolved over a period of three and a half years, and the VFW spearheaded it many years ago, and with the intention of opening it up to community participants from the very beginning, because this project is way too big just for one organization. We always have known this. When the original courthouse was taken down, there was a list of veterans from Warren County that was taken down also. One of our former representatives, Mr. Brockville, Russell Brockville, mentioned it to us, he's a former commander of the VFW. He said that, you know, we don't have that anymore in the new courthouse, would you do some research on it? So we did. There is a memorial outside of the courthouse for all the veterans in Warren County. And we got to looking into this, and we started, several people were brought to our attention. One was Pat Dugan of Dugan Contracting, that builds Bass Pro Shops and Gabelas all over the United States, and Bill Rupp, WWII Marine, veteran of the island battles, who designed and helped implement the memorial in front of St. Peter's City Hall. He's helped many other organizations get together, and Dugan Contracting, without us beholding to them in any way, said that they would help us in any way they could, and they have, gave us a lot of advice. But the design you see here is a byproduct of people working together in Warren County. Now, you have a main plaza. Well, before I even get into that, let's just talk specifics here. This is not just for all veterans of Warren County. This is specifically for the ones who did not come home, who are killed in action for POW or MIA. The ones you see here, we're all very fortunate. These people were not. They didn't think they were going to make a sacrifice, but they did.
Rick, come in. Do you have the number of?
64. 29 in World War I, 30 in World War II, none in Korea, although there were 920 in the state of Missouri, none in Warren County, four in Vietnam, and one from the Gulf, so far that we can say for sure should be on this wall. So it's for that person and the family. Some of these families still have remorse and suffered. And we have people on our, on our board, or on our little commission here, that one individual lost her father in Korea, missing in action. And it's still a painful thing to recollect for her and her daughter. So specifically, we're talking about the person who gave the ultimate sacrifice and the family. Now, this is going to be modified. Lisa Downey-Going Postal is donating a new poster that is gonna be revamped. You can strike this little plaque here. The Battlefield Cross, this is what this is called. Are there any of you not familiar with the Battlefield Cross? You all know what it is? Okay? The Battlefield Cross will be closer to the American flag and in front of it, and the woman and child will be looking down on it, indicating the person who died and family, or friends. The, this string, that was the best we could do with computers at the time, is actually a reflecting pool. The wall is rough-cut. This is unique to Warren County. The wall is rough-cut, this is unique to Warren County, as far as we know, there is nothing like this out there. This is, this was designed by us. The front, it's a goldish-yellow limestone that matches the administrative building pretty much, it'll be rough on the edges and on the front, and the waterfalls on each side will also be made of that same stone, and it'll be a reflecting pool in front of the wall. On the back, it will be honed, and the sixty-four names so far will be honed on the back of the wall. We've raised about fourteen thousand dollars so far, ten thousand dollars went to the flagpole. That ten thousand dollars was a donation from the carpenters' union before they left Warren County to consolidate with other unions farther east. And Tom Carter worked with them on that and has those stored in his barn and ready to go. We're going first-class on this. We started out, we were gonna use a concrete statue or a stone statue and maybe a prefab wall with veneer on it, but it's right out in front of the Warren County Administrative Building. And it represents a lot of the values that we have in this community. Family and sacrifice and that kind of thing. So we decided we're gonna go first-class. The statues will be framed. The person who will probably do this is Bob Dowd from Dutch Al, Dutch Al is in Warren County. He does this kind of work for fire departments and police departments all over the United States, for cities. Beautiful, beautiful work, if you ever get down there, you need to take a look. And he will probably have a little artistic license in how he depicts this, but I can tell you right now, he does magnificent work, it will be something that will make the county proud. And really, when you drive up from this south, this will be slightly angled down by Blossom Lane, you'll be able to see Sun Gayall and you'll see those figures out in front, and you won't have to read any signs to understand what it's all about. Everything is said right there. And we feel that it's very important that we make this tribute to them and also represent the values of service to country and family to our young people, who many do not understand the fact that people died or gave up a loved one so that we can live the life that we live in this country. So that's what this is all about. Now, I don't wanna take up all the time here, Tom, would you like to say something?
Sure. I'll try to collect the few thoughts I'd like to share with everybody this evening. One of the concepts that Rick had shared with us is the fact that we have a woman and child reviewing the Soldiers' Cross there. We want very much for this to depict not only the veterans that lost their lives, but the families from which they came, because they suffer forever with this loss. And we, as citizens of the county, are deeply indebted to these families that's given so much, so very much. We owe them the respect and the honor that they so, so much deserve. We're all indebted to them, us veterans as well, all citizens, we're in debt. And we feel like this is a very appropriate memorial, we feel like this is the appropriate time to do it. Why it wasn't done twenty, thirty years ago, I don't know, but the timing is now, we have just a wonderful team assembled together that's really passionate about seeing this built and things are moving together. We've got community involvement, community leadership, we've got business people already involved, we're getting a lot of very favorable reaction about this. Let's see, I think I will share just a little bit, I know our time is valuable tonight, but I'll share just a little bit, I don't think Rick really described the water feature. He did talk about the reflecting pool, but on each side of that, I don't know if you can clearly see that in our picture here, but there is a water feature, there's like dual waterfalls that are cascading down and collected in the reflecting pool and recirculated. Those flags are, flagpoles are gifts from the carpenters, they heard about this project when we were just barely starting to think and talk about it, and we thank our reporter Tim for that, we were really caught off-guard there, but it really worked out terrific. But we went first-class on these flagpoles and I won't go into all the descriptions of them, but they're very high-quality poles, we will be flying the proper-sized flags on each pole, the US flag stands five-foot taller than the others, it will also have a POW flag underneath it, but the US flag is a five-by-eight flag, that's a gigantic flag, that's the right-sized flag for that pole. And all the service poles, there are six of them by the way, each one of them will have a four-by-six flag, that'll be quite a spectacular sight when we drive up and down forty-seven. And the other thought I would really like to share with you this evening, is we feel like this site, we know without a doubt this is a unique site anywhere in the whole, we feel it probably anywhere in the whole United States, because we just collected the inspiration from different people and eventually made it kind of fit together. But, I think I lost where I was going with this now. But we know that this site is without a doubt unique in many ways, and where I was getting ready to go with this was, we feel like this site will enhance the image of not only Warrenton but all of Warren County, it's in a very open, accessible spot, many and probably most of our schoolchildren are gonna go by that repeatedly, we as citizens will see it and be proud of it, our visitors who come in and pass through town cannot help but see it, the people who come down to the courthouse can be proud that this is part of county property, located right here within the city limits. But this site is for all of the citizens of this county to take ownership and pride in, and also it will show the rest of the world that we do care, that we do respect, we do honor those who pay such a huge sacrifice. I think maybe I'll quit right there, but thank you very much for your time. You're welcome. Could we allow a few moments for questions from any of the board members?
Sure. Maybe we have one more presenter. It's pretty critical, some people like to be in the spotlight, and this next gentleman is in charge of our fundraising committee in Manhattan, is responsible for our website. Would it be all right for him to make that presentation now, or do you wanna ask questions?
Let's ask questions and then we'll let him finish up.
Okay.
Does any board members have any questions you wanna ask the group?
Nobody else can ask how much the budget is?
That was what I was gonna say.
Well, I thought the fundraising piece would cover that.
Okay.
You do a disservice to give that, then I'll ask for money, so.
One thing I might add, I'm happy to see the county commissioners here tonight, Commissioner Hampson and Klisner and President Commissioner Engle, and I appreciate them stepping forward and working with this group and letting it happen on the administration spot, that is a good location for it. So I think you all mentioned they might have to give up a couple parking spaces to squeeze it all in there, but they, now, I am glad to see you all at the meeting here, one of the deals with our board is, we're supposed to all attend one of your meetings in the course of a year, that was part of our strategic planning thing, so you let me know when you see some of them at your meeting.
Oh wait, now they have to stay through the whole meeting, though.
I didn't tell them that. So do we have to stay during theirs?
Well, yeah.
Okay. We do appreciate you being here. No other questions?
Just a comment, I'm very supportive of it, I've attended a meeting so far and I like what I see, I'm glad that you guys are doing this, I back you one hundred percent, I think it's excellent, and I think most of the public will too. I guess on a side note, are you guys giving up your personal parking spots, or is it just?
Right out front. Mr. Wyman?
Yeah.
Mr. Clark, do you have something?
No, I was just, I pulled up the website and was looking at some of that.
Oh, looking at the thing with the website.
He's sneaking ahead.
You can donate to it.
Absolutely.
Lloyd, why don't you come forward?
I'm working my little piece there.
And yeah, give us your little.
Well, I'm working on the fundraising side of it, and first what I would say is, after speaking with my brother who lost his best friend right in front of him, he was a combat medic in Iraq, and he doesn't have a place to mourn the loss of his best friend. And now coming home from Marais, Kentucky, back here to Warrenton, he has a place that when he's here with his kids, he can actually sit down with him and say, "This is the price that was paid." Most of us, when we lose a loved one, have a graveside to go to, that we can go and tip the cap and pour the, you know, the little wine or the water or leave flowers behind, but a way to just reflect and have our private conversations with those that have passed, the folks that have lost a loved one at war, that maybe the remains have not come back or their remains are interred in another national cemetery, this is a place to congregate, especially friends that are from all over the country. There's something Rick had shared with me, sometimes that when you'd see a friend of yours get injured or more, he would be put into a helicopter and that was the last time you ever saw them. So this thing means so much more than I think that people of my generation and younger really can appreciate, because we've lost the tangible nature and the true emotional impact of what war is. The media has glamorized it, video games have promoted it, it's turned into entertainment, and it's not entertainment, because life, when you are killed, that's the finality of it, and there's no more horrific way to die than other than war, but what a great way to go if you're gonna give up your life for your country. This can be utilized as an education piece to educate those younger generations as to truly what war is and what it costs. So segues right into what is the cost of the monument. Until we have the final design, we're not gonna know what that total figure is. Currently, we're moving with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to cover it, we believe it's gonna come in way in below that. But we aimed high, because we needed to get this thing off the ground and in flight. If we overshoot that number, if it comes in lower than the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, then we have money that can help take care of this memorial for years to come beyond that time. Now, we've created a website, tributetoveterans.org, which Mr. Clark has already pulled up, it gives a little bit about the memorial, it's gonna have, it tells a little bit about those that are involved, and it has a way to give online. The online elements of our fundraising effort basically allows us to reach out all across the world, all across the country, or just from, just right from your home, to be able to just jump in there and give a minimum of five dollars, five dollars to the sky's the limit is what you could donate. But it's a very simple way, just to put five dollars and put your money behind what we're building. Now, we're gonna have fundraisers throughout the community, which we'll release those schedules as they're more finalized, some VIP events and things that will be more geared to raising large sum of money in a short amount of time. We're also going to have a business platform or a business donation that will have different levels that businesses can get involved in a way that they can be recognized as being a part of this. So to summarize, we're looking, we're starting with a budget of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, we are gonna work our tails off to get the numbers underneath that, but still deliver a first-class monument that when folks come in here, they can be proud of it, it can be a destination for veterans from other communities to come, because maybe they don't have a monument of their own. So with that, I will close. Thank you.
I'd recommend too, that, and you're probably already doing this, but this would've been a great thing for my father's memorials, you know, when he passed away, so I would have some type of marketing information available at those funeral homes as well.
Yes, good call. Any other thoughts or questions?
Any other questions or thoughts?
Yes, that is one thing, thank you very much, Tom. We are operating as a 501(c)(3), so this is a tax-deductible charitable donation. Anything else you can think of I may have missed, Miss Luke? Thank you very much.
We thank you, gentlemen, very, very good presentation, very thorough, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to leave, however you wanna do it.
You guys, did you put a list of all the deceased on the website?
Yeah, that is coming. The website's a work in progress, and we will be adding to it, we'll have a history timeline, and then eventually we'll have a blog so that we can source news out that corresponds with what we continue to see in the newspaper and things like that.
I think we'd be dismissed or in air if we didn't thank them for their service. You know, my father was a WWII vet and the impact it has light, and I think it impacts your lives, and so we need to recognize that and honor that also.
I agree. Thank you very much. Rick, would you do me a favor, could you move that over?
Yeah.
The problem is, I need to look at the people at the table.
Okay, we can't see our.
You're lucky, you're fortunate, yeah.
Very pleased with that, Rick. They're kinda, they're kinda, yeah.
We'd like to thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we don't blame you for not staying.
Regretments?
Yeah.
Is there anything to eat when we're done?
No.
No, we're all in.
I got a bowl of candy. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
They don't? Really?
I can't, I can't tell where they went.
I'm sure they will, she said they can't find where the credit card, why don't you give me your credit card and I'll try that?
We'll take care of it.
I'll take care of it.
How about if I just give them cash?
I'm ready for item eight, approval of liquor by the drink liquor license for El Hemador Mexican Restaurant.
Oh, please pass this, it was dry last night.
This really is the last one.
This is it? They got left off the first list, or didn't get their application yet?
It's late.
It's late, okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for El Hemador Mexican Restaurant located at 512 Warren County Center.
We'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Kessler, second by Alderman Schluter.
And would someone rush that decision out?
For the approval of liquor by the drink liquor license for El Hemador Mexican Restaurant located at 512 Warren County Center, any discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero with one episode. I'm down on item nine, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer. Terry, what do you got for us?
My first item for you this evening is the results from the Tourism Commission meeting on July eighth. There were four requests for that meeting, one from the Warren County Fine Arts Council, which was for the little tear pads that you've seen around the community, advertising the concerts in the park. There was one from the farmer's market for the advertising signs, the little yard signs that they put out on the day of the market to show that the time and direction to the market. And then there was one from the China House Buffet for their interstate attraction sign, as well as the Relax Inn for the interstate attraction sign. Total of the requests to the Tourism Commission was one thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars, and they're recommending approval of all of them.
All of them. Any discussion or concerns? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay the bill for the signs of one thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars from the Tourism Commission.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kessler, second by Alderman Clark, to approve the tourism recommendation in the amount of one thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars. Roll call.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Motion carried five-zero. What did you say about this?
Her voice wasn't coming through and it was just fuzz, so I couldn't hear anything.
Carry voice?
Mm-hmm.
That's unusual.
Very unusual.
Very odd.
I couldn't hear what you said.
Yeah, it was just fuzz coming through.
That's strange.
We got a technical issue?
It's, it's, it's all right now. Okay.
My next item is the Employee Uniform Pants bid. As always, this time of year, we sent out a request for bids for, these are the Employee Uniform Pants. We received one response, which was from the company that previously has supplied our uniform pants, that is clean uniforms out of St. Louis, Missouri, and total of that bid is one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. that is clean uniforms out of St. Louis, Missouri, and total of that bid is $1,568.18.
Does nobody else do that? I mean, why didn't we get any more responses, do you think?
We sent it to half a dozen people that are on our vendor list, as well as advertise. I don't have an answer for you, why we don't get those bids. It's always been a very low-volume bid, and we've never gotten more than one or two. I just don't think there's that many suppliers active out here. There's a lot of suppliers who want to clean the uniforms and provide a weekly service, but not many who are interested in doing the one-time situation.
Yeah, the pretty small bid form.
Is the field that we get, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid for $1,568.18 for the employee pant bid from, you said, clean?
Clean.
Clean uniforms?
Uniform.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Kessley, second by Alderman Schluter, to approve the bid from Clean out of St. Louis, Missouri, in the amount of $1,568.18. Any other discussion, concerns? Roll call.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent.
We will have the employee uniform shirt bid ready for you next meeting. We found a glitch this afternoon, and it was too late to get that corrected for tonight.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Geber, Public Works Director?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Board. Got the monthly report in front of you? You have any questions?
I'm checking your water wells here, I thought most of them are broken down. Some of them actually must be working.
It was last month.
Oh, that was last month.
We don't seem to have a water problem.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was joking.
That's coming.
Well, but our well production has been okay.
Yeah, we're fine, it's just we got.
Now you've got problems.
Yeah, and we're still fine, it's just we have equipment that needs to be repaired.
Of course we do.
And I'll get to that here in a minute.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Guy on each report, any concerns?
Next.
Go ahead, Guy.
Next item I have is approval to move forward on Hickory Lick. I need approval to, if it... We got a preliminary cost, but if we're going to move forward, we need to get in engineering, construction costs, and that's going to take some time.
So, we just done some preliminary engineering?
Just some preliminary, get a rough cost of what it's going to, what it will take. Now we need to do a construction cost.
How long will it take to get the construction cost?
I'm sorry.
How long will it take to get the engineering all completed?
That I do not know, I didn't, I didn't check with them to see how long that would take.
Does this include curbing and guttering?
No.
So this is just overlay?
This is the, no, and that overlay, it's repairing out the old road and putting a new base down, and then resurfacing it.
Why would we need to tear out the old road? Can we just do overlay?
There's, there's no, what they will look at is what base we have underneath, but what the reason why the road's breaking up and falling apart is there is no base underneath the road.
And there's, there's no way you could overlay that road?
No.
What happened to your curb and guttering?
It, just to, just repair, it's a repair, maintenance of the road is what we're looking to do.
I thought.
Instead of the curb and gutter.
I thought originally, when we talked about this project, that we were going to do a first-class road.
Storm, well, this will be, this will be a nice road, but it's a cost issue too. Versus with the curb and gutter, this is going to make the road wider, and then make stormwater, re-ditching it with some stormwater pipe in it, but no curb and gutter.
So will the ditches be gone?
No, you'll still have the drainage on one side of the road, and then on the other.
So, those who, us sitting up here, who's told people that the ditches will be gone, that's not true.
Well, they won't be, they won't be as bad as what they are now, they'll, they will be cleaned up, but you'll still have stormwater ditches on the side of the road.
What about shoulders? Will there be shoulders on the road?
It'll just be, I don't, that I do not know, I'm sorry for that, but they're making the roads wider than what it is now. There's no sidewalk involved in it, it was just to remove what's there and then replace the road with a wider road.
Are we going, we're going 450 feet east of Jasper Lane? Is that even a city?
As you go, as you go past where the complex is, then if you go up to the next entrance into the parking lot, I don't know what parking lot is, but that's where it's heading, that's where it's going to. Like I said, this is just a preliminary, it's not an actual.
Was that, but is that part of the road in the city?
Up to there, the sign that says the county road, yeah.
I didn't think that's four hundred, but that's pretty long.
Yeah, and I need construction, engineering, not the cost.
Guy, is, is that something we could do later, as far as curbing and anything? Can that be added later if we choose to?
That's something we can take in consideration when construction costs.
So it's, it is something can be added later if we need?
We've talked about that at the time, yeah. Our goal, our goal is to keep the price down because the road is in such bad shape.
I understand.
Yeah, you know, and I, Eric, I'd be honest with you, I'd vehemently argue against curb and guttering. We have residential property in this community that is in dire need of curb and gutters whose ditches are significantly deeper than the ditches here. I was over on Roosevelt, walking it, visiting with a couple people live over there. There's ditches that come up to my waist in a residential area. So before you start curbing, guttering a road to a ballpark, before we curb and gutter peoples in this community, I think we're, we're just sending the wrong message.
And I think I may have either misspoken or misunderstood, I'm not asking now, I'm asking for future. Even if we need to look at it a few years down the road, can it be added? Is it something that can be added later on? Is it, or is this construction going to be done where you can't add that later on? That was my question.
And that's what we can discuss with the engineers at that time.
I think that a lot of it depend on how much ground we own there, how wide.
That's correct.
That road is.
So how much is he asking?
If, if, if this, if we move forward with this, and we proceed with engineering, can we get a separate breakout cost of what it would cost for curb and guttering?
I'm sure we can get whatever we want.
We're willing to pay for it.
Right, with the engineering.
And that might, and that might skew us off the price altogether.
Right.
What, what do you have for preliminary figure on what it would cost to do this road? Just our early?
One, one million eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents.
And that's what, no, no curb and gutter?
That's correct, that's just, that's just. This minimum is... And that was the goal, was to keep it, and it's just, and it's just a road repair, maintenance, not in, what you would say, a new road, it's just maintenance of the road that's already there.
Is there alternatives to this? There's a lot of money. Have you asked the engineers that?
The problem with the road is there's no base. So if you would wanted to try to clean it up, you could go in and spend a bunch of money grinding it and trying to get it level, but when you grind, you're taking off what's already on there, and then if you resurfaced it another year or so, you're going to have the same rock problems. What it boils down to is there's nothing underneath the road. And that's why you got spots where it sinks, and it's been patched, and then it sinks again, and it patches, and you get so much on it, it starts breaking up, and you got potholes.
Have you asked the engineers if there's an alternative to, to this that would create the same product?
Every, every, when I talk to the engineer, it comes to the same thing, there's no base under the road. So whatever you do is going to be a temporary fix.
So basically, that was just a county gravel road that, you know, every year the county throw a little gravel on it, so there probably is, the drainage probably isn't very well worked there either.
I haven't had any complaints about water drainage through there, but it's, there's nothing underneath of it.
More complaints about alignments after they're tracked out.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the worst roads that.
And it's been patched and repatched and.
And repatched, and repatched, and repatched.
It was better when it was all gravel, just all day down and things.
When I was talking about the water drains, sometimes if you don't get water away from, from the main road structure, that, that seeps under the road and it causes it to dip and weep.
Goes underneath, and we're getting to the point now where it's been overlaid and seeping so bad, it's higher than the streets going into the.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So, right now, what you're asking for is for us to proceed with a true engineering report.
That's correct.
So you're just asking for the, how much are you asking for?
Seventy-four thousand?
Yeah, what are we asking for? I mean, there's, the engineering and surveying on this bid is seventy-four thousand, four seventy-nine and twenty-two cents. Is that what we're asking for?
We're, we're asking them if we, if I can proceed to get a cost for the engineering, construction engineering. And then I'll get ahold of the engineer and find out what the cost would be.
So now, now you're not asking for any money, you just want permission to contract, or get bids from engineers?
That wasn't what I thought you were requesting, but.
Well, I might, I might have misspoke, I apologize. I need, I need to move forward to get construction cost for Hickory Lick with, with the engineer.
And that amount is?
We talked about alternative financing for this project. I mean, it seems.
For the remainder of the grant money?
Yes.
We've not looked at that, but we certainly could.
I mean, to me, from a financial perspective, anytime you take on a capital project that has a historical longer life, you need to look at the financial obligations, because it may free up your ability to do more projects in the future or other projects. Because there is, I mean, in my experience, we've only really done one major water project in the city of Warrenton, and that was probably about 25 years ago. For those who probably don't remember, Flora Road used to have a ditch in front of the house that Dave and Debbie Current lived in and were considering buying, but they couldn't get any assurances from the city that would be fixed. And the ditch at the time was probably two and a half feet wide and two feet deep. And so we financed the project to fix Flora Road, and if you drive over that now, you wouldn't even know there's, that can handle that kind of water. And, you know, I just hesitant to lay out cash for something that's capital like that without looking at some alternatives. I understand part of it has to be spent, but.
There'd be a couple, we certainly can look at that. My belief was tonight that the request was to ask for approval to move forward with this project. Not, because the end, the original engineering, this engineering will give you the cost. That was the purpose of tying toward the engineering. Now, the next step is two things, construction engineering, which is actually drawing up the construction documents so that this can go out to bid for contractors to be able to bid from those construction documents. The other piece of that is the financing component, which there's $580,000 roughly in grants that in the budget we said we would put toward this. If in fact that's our desire, then we need to proceed with obtaining final approval on both of those. It's two grants, one is the STIP grant, which has to be used for some kind of roadway project. The other is the money from the NSP grant program that we worked through that has to be used for a CDPG eligible project. We've talked verbally to the folks involved in those grants to make sure that these, this project fits within that, and we've gotten verbal approval, but we need to proceed with formal approval. That's going to take a period of time, as well as the construction engineering. So, I don't believe that we're looking for any construction pricing other than what you have here, because we paid the engineers to give us a price. I'd be very disappointed if we moved forward and it was something different. The unknown is, when it goes to bid, what that, that dollar amount will really be in the bids that you give back, but we can't do that until we have construction documents. So, that was my belief of what the request was tonight.
Yes, yes, I'm, I say it wrong.
So, I'm a little confused yet, are you requesting money or just approval to go forward?
Well, I think that's the same response. We, we won't go forward with, if you all don't approve the project, then we're not going to go ask for approval to utilize grant funds for something that may not move forward. So I think the answer's yes to both questions, because.
What does the motion look like? I guess that's what John's talking with, right?
To move forward with the Hickory?
With a dollar amount of sign?
The whole project. The whole project, yeah.
Or just move forward?
Well, I, I think right now you have to believe it's a million eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Does that have to be included in the budget, in the other motion? Isn't that your question, John?
Yeah, I.
John wants to make a motion.
I'm not for sure what you're asking.
But he doesn't know what to say.
I believe that the motion is to move forward with the budgeted capital project for Hickory Lick Road improvement.
Period?
Period.
You making that?
Oh, yeah.
I'll make it, what she said.
You have to repeat it. You just can't say what she said.
I can say twice back.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the Hickory Lick Road Project. To do what?
That's it?
Is that it?
You got no dollar amount?
For the budgeted amount.
For the budgeted amount.
Yes, and then if it comes back from construction and there's something different, then you all would need to reapprove something different than what was in the budget.
Got that? Okay. Motion on the floor.
Second. All right, I got a motion on the floor by Alderman Kessley, seconded by Alderman Clark, to move forward with the Hickory Lick project as budgeted?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alderperson Kesslerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
No.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried four to one with one absent.
And I think Alderman Ock, what we can do is we start working on this project, is start looking at the possibility of financing the remainder portion. If we can get both grants approved, then whatever the remainder is, can we find some kind of financing to cover that? And I'm sure we can.
Well, what I'd like to do, and maybe we should put this on the agenda on the 19th, is I really would like to talk, if we're going to finance, talk about another water project that I think has a, a good, strong basis for conversation, that maybe if we're going to finance, we can couple this road project and the other water project in. And specifically referring to the area that goes from Flora, Steinhagen, Roosevelt, and McKinley. Those are areas that are inundated quite a bit by major water issues. If you drive through there, there's ditches that haven't been maintained by the city, and therefore they're not being mowed by the property owners. Some of the ditches are up to my waist. And we have a basis for starting the project, because Flora is where you start at the bottom of the hill. And so I think if we're going to finance, I'd like to see if we could put that on the project, and I'd be happy to talk about it, and encourage you, Alderman, to go out and drive in the area and just see what I'm talking about, because most of you probably don't get in that area. It's become a major feeder road for the subdivision that was put in Truustale that enters off Banner, and a lot of people go that way when they leave, because the quickest way to get to Highway 47 is to go on Banner, cut down Roosevelt, cut down McKinley, cut down Steinhagen, so it's got a lot of traffic in there.
And major water issues.
The quickest from where?
From the subdivision.
From the subdivision.
From the subdivision in Truustale.
Dickman Farms. Oh, Dickman Farms.
So I, I mean, if we could couple it with two projects, then I think, I think it's something we need to look at.
So you'd like to put that on the next budget?
The next agenda.
Next, I'm sorry.
I would not next, I won't be here the next meeting with the following meeting. What is that, the?
We'll talk about it when you're out here.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. Sorry, bud. I'm still skeptical, I'm going to get my sidewalk on Wabash, so. So.
So would we call that as an agenda item drainage? So, would we call that as an agenda item drainage and roadway project?
Yes.
Flora McKinley? Something.
And, and let me explain my vote. You always ask for explanation. I think if you go back in the records, I historically rejected the city taking in Hickory Lick. I didn't believe that the city should be taking the county's problems on. And the board obviously felt differently about that. So, here it is years later, and we're doing what the county should have done at the beginning, but the city taxpayers are having to pay for it.
You've been consistent, I, I give you credit. You, you held your guns the whole time.
And I keep holding.
Okay.
I appreciate it. I will say though, I mean, just using analogy, it's, that road is a rusty, it's a rusty lock on a treasure chest. I still believe that. I still believe we have a gem up there and we should really enhance it the best we can to promote more business to come up there, more games, more everything else utilized at that field. And speaking through the meeting that we had for the recs department, I can tell you, there are several people that would agree with that that may not live in the city, but I can tell you about roughly two hundred and something signed up that do live inside city limits that I can guarantee you will probably agree with that as well.
Well, everybody's entitled to their opinion.
They are, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not chasing that in your, your opinion at all. No, no, I, I, you know, and I, and I have been a, a huge supporter for recreation, for youth. My commitment to my wife, the second time I ran was to get a city swimming pool. That was the one reason she allowed me to run. We worked hard on that. I just have a real problem when we transition into services to the kids in this community to now becoming a business where we're bringing in outside tournaments and all that. That's not where I think our dollars and attention should be spent. I mean, I, the kids want to go play, I don't know, it's core league or whatever it is, that's great, I think we ought to do that. But when it starts transitioning over to million dollar investments into the community so we can, you know, get tourist stuff in, so they can drive on this nice road and say, oh, I'm going to move to Warrenton even though I don't, it's because it's got a nice road to the ballpark even though I don't have a job here, I don't have a house here. I go out to drive the other roads and I see ditches. I just don't think the argument that this is a sales feature for Warrenton makes any sense.
And that's, to clarify, two hundred and seventy-some of the people within the city limits have signed up for recreations that will be played in those tournaments. That's not to also include the people who live on the county, and I can't give you that number, I don't have that number. I just, roughly, from what I remember talking before was with the rec department, was two hundred and seventy-some odd within the city limits.
Kids.
Kids.
And parents, and grandparents, and aunts. I mean, that, it's not just the kids.
Right. No, it isn't.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on. Mr. Guevers, what else you got?
Next item I have is a, an approval for Pinkney Sidewalk Change of Scope. The, wanting to see if we can move forward from going from the school entrance to Warrior Ridge. And the budget amount for our portion of the whole project was sixty-five thousand. And I did a rough cost estimate of fifty thousand, what it was looking like, but that's just a rough.
What, what was that number?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty?
Yes, sir.
And you're going from where?
From the school entrance to Warrior Ridge, that's to be the first street.
That, that was the project that we were going to partner up with the school?
Yeah, but it was only going to be fifty thousand?
See, see, the original project was to go all the way to Warrior Avenue.
Right.
And the school was going to do half. So, from high school entrance to Warrior, the first.
Warrior, Warrior Ridge.
Warrior Ridge.
Well, someone's going to get killed there. I mean, I, I got a big earful just last night from someone who was basically almost ran over by a fast-moving black car. Someone's going to get killed on that road. Hopefully, it's not going to be a child.
Is there that much foot traffic there?
Yeah, there's a ton. And all those kids have to go walk to school now through there because they don't go over to.
I guess I'm confused.
And you have your, your cross country that runs through that area as well, the courses they run.
But that whole neighborhood there has to shoot down Pinkney to get to school. So, they're walking a whole section of the, of the road.
Do they walk down that way to get to the high school or to get to the grade school?
Grade school, grade school.
They're like, they're Becky boom.
But in addition to that, the number of people walking and running on, on that street with, you know, just the general population, it's a lot like the Highway forty-seven mess that we can't seem to get that little piece of property with a sidewalk either. But, I mean, this, this is pretty important to public safety as far as I'm concerned.
Is that what your crew doing the?
No.
Bit out.
That's not the problem, they want to be at the intersection of the library.
No, that was, that was a piece of property or the stretch that the school looked at and said, there wasn't enough people walking it. So, they, that's why they opted out of it.
Yeah.
I mean, one, one child is worth doing if you save one child.
I think so, and I mean, it's, it, there's a lot of people, I mean, we patrol it. I know there's a lot of cops on it, but there's also a lot of fast-moving vehicles flying down that road. So, are, I don't have, I could not find on my paperwork guy where, where we had that information. So, did, was that something that I'm just missing because I don't see it on my? Okay. So, Guy, are you asking to do fifty or sixty-five?
Well, what I'm going to have to do is take it, take it back to Lewis and Beatty, I meant Lewis and Beatty because there's a bridge involved in it and then a curb and gutter need to be tra, changed. But he did the whole section.
Okay.
And now, we're just doing a partial section.
So, right now, you just need the approval to proceed to the.
Budget, I say budget amount is sixty-five thousand dollars.
Where is that money?
That was, that was under the Pinkney, we had that money budgeted for the Pinkney.
We did already have it.
Do we not?
Half it in the budget, all right. I'll make a motion that we approve Guy to proceed, it's a budgeted amount of sixty-five thousand for the schools, for the sidewalk between Pinkney and Warrior Ridge and getting reengineering to determine the actual.
That's with Lewis and Beatty that did the original re, reengineering.
I'll go and second that.
Motion by Alderman Casserly, seconded by Alderman Schluter to approve the Pinkney Sidewalk Change of Scope and the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars.
That's just for the engineering?
Well, that would be reengineering in the scope of the project.
Yeah, including reengineering with Lewis and Beatty. Any, just more discussion or concerns? Roll call, please.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one epson. Submersible pump.
The, well, seven has a line shaft pump. I mean, the motor's on top and it's got shaft run down. That came apart on the twelfth of July. We had it in the budget and it was out for bid, and the bids came in to be opened on July seventh. And we budgeted eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. And Flynn Drilling was the low bid at seventy-five thousand, seven ninety-five. They are going to proceed with that tomorrow morning.
If we pay the bill. I'll make a motion that we approve the Flynn Drilling bid of seventy-five thousand, seven ninety-five, which is under our budget amount of eighty-four thousand, three hundred.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Casserly, seconded by Alderman Schluter to approve the low bid on the well pump at number seven with Flynn Well Drilling in the amount of seventy-five thousand, seven ninety-five. Any discussion, concerns?
We got lucky on that timing, didn't we?
Is that, that, is that the one out to Fairgrounds?
Yes, sir.
Guy with that figure, I'd like to see a little smile that you're saving us money this time.
Roll call, please.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Schluter?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one epson. What else, Mr. Guy?
Okay, on July third, well four would not run. So, we called Flynn out and he came and checked the motor and it, it showed that it had a short in the motor. So, we called, after Mr. Flynn left, I, we called the city electrician and he came out and verified that we had an issue with the motor, and it's a submersible pump. So, Flynn pulled, pulled the pump and motor for an inspection for twenty-five hundred. It was damaged. So, they installed a new, a new pump and motor, lowered the pump an extra sixty-two feet. So, they give us a hundred foot of water over top of the pump. And that was nineteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars.
So much greater savings.
Yeah.
And that was an emergency.
Is there a water table going down?
No, our, our well at that location is one thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven feet is how deep the well is. When Mr. Flynn came out and did that and checked it, with having a hundred foot of water over top of the pump, we didn't want to have another drought and come up with another situation we had before. So, it was kind of like a little insurance policy. We lowered it another sixty-two feet as well there without having to change anything with the pump.
Was that the one that had a lightning strike?
That's correct, and that, and our, that should be covered. We're turning that into our insurance company.
So, we could recoup some of that. So, you need a motion to approve that expenditure? No.
Sorry, I just informed you.
He's already showing up.
Pardon me?
He's already showing up.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. What else you have?
Uh, well eight.
We just talked about that, didn't we? You know, that was seven.
On the twenty-sixth, we had an issue with the water leaking back in the pipe and causing a water hammer. We haven't had no problems with that until July twelfth. We started getting a water hammer again. Mr. Flynn said he will come out and pull it at no charge. When they fixed it the first time, it would needed a piece of pipe and a coupler. They put that on, submerged the pump back down, charged the casing with water, and they let it sit, and I verified that the water didn't drop back down. So, what they fixed at the time was that problem. But now, it's leaking back down. That has to be pulled to see what's going on there. He will not charge us for that, he said. But the problem is, we can't do nothing with well eight till we get well seven back running. So, well seven will be have to be addressed, and well eight is operable but needs to be addressed.
Every day, I get well calls, just like a juggling balls in the air, which ones work and which one doesn't. But we're getting close to having them all up and running.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Guevers?
Yeah, when do you anticipate coming to the board requesting engineering work on the Wabash Sidewalk Project? That was approved in the budget?
Okay, I, next meeting?
I won't be here, but you can.
Yes, come next meeting.
If, I will get that on my agenda and get it to you.
Thank you. I, I'll remind you in case it slips off. There's only twenty-four meetings between that and the next budget.
I've noticed everything you want is around your house.
No, it's not. No, it's not.
I don't know.
And I would, I would major.
Steinhagen, Roosevelt, Flora.
I would argue, I take care, I take care of the people who vote for me. That's part of what you do when you're an electrician. But I would wager to say.
Guevers probably didn't.
I would wager to say, they probably didn't. I know two of them definitely didn't. But I would wager to say there's more people who walk on Wabash than walk on Pinkney.
I can't argue that because I, I don't know.
We'd have to put a counter up, but there is a lot on Pinkney.
A lot of water.
We'll, we'll get a counter out there and take, take a curve.
I'm going to put you in charge of that, Gary, you stand out there and count.
I'm going to do that. Hey, I was going to ask Fred, since he's here, did you vote for Hickory Lick Road or did you vote against it? The taking it in? Do you remember?
He's not allowed to speak in the public.
Did you vote for taking Hickory Lick Road?
You're losing control, Mayor.
He's not in public, he's Fred.
Totally different.
Smart, smart answer, Fred. All right. Anything else? I'm not going to ask you anymore, Guy, because every time I ask you, you come up with some other well issue, so.
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Boosie Cruz, grounds of meaning, this director.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. All I have tonight is my monthly report for June.
Hey, Brett, how often, how frequent do the mowing crews mow like up and down Lakeview? Do you have it like on a schedule or is it just as you can get to things?
Lakeview Road?
Yeah.
We don't.
No schedule?
There is no, no one on Lake, uh, Lakeview.
I, I'm talking.
That was taken off of our, the board, the thing that you all approved was taken off.
From forty-seven down Lakeview to the?
Wester.
The old pits, uh, the old, where the old soccer field is?
Lake, Lakeview Park.
The Lakeview Park, huh?
We do a little on the little edge that we own by, by the bridge, but that's, that's about all we do.
Okay. And somebody else is picked.
I see Walter out there doing a good job.
Yep.
He's happy.
Yes, yes, sir, he is, uh, doing his time. So, he's, he's all over the place, so he's.
So, the city doesn't mow at all?
I'll look at my map and that, what I'm, uh, right now, I would say no.
Okay, because I get calls for that all the time and, and it gets done and they think I told you to do it.
Don't tell them.
Apparently, they're.
Somebody else is doing it.
Cutting it themselves.
Or someone else is doing it for it.
Hey, Brad, have you been maintaining in front of Farmer's Market, the, the little area that has the?
The pliers?
Yeah.
Yes.
Looks very nice, thank you.
Thanks.
I think it's really, uh, we made that area look nice.
Yeah, a little green always helps.
Add a little color. And by the way, tell your wife thank you because I've seen her out there doing it too.
She does a lot of weeding when I, when I don't get to it, so, after she's walking. I will check into that, Karen, about the, I'll see if it's on our map. I, I thought that was all taken off.
Okay.
When I was out this week walking in my ward, Roosevelt, I noticed that there's a property on the corner of Roosevelt and Banner that they are not maintaining the ditch, which is our responsibility, and the weeds literally are three feet high. So, if you did go by and hit that.
Is that up to your waist? Is that the one up to your waist?
No, it's not. It's actually higher than my waist.
Speaking of which, I.
You've got to get longer legs.
Down the Warren Avenue. You used to do that two years ago. You, you used to want to come down Warren Avenue.
Maybe you weren't home.
Talking about Alderman Ock?
He's giving me a bad time.
Roosevelt and Banner?
Pardon me?
Roosevelt and Banner?
No, yeah, Roosevelt and Banner. You know, where it comes out of the subdivision, Truesdale?
Yeah.
The corner house there, I guess they decided they didn't want to maintain the city's ditch anymore, so it's, as, as a Sunday, it was really high.
Anything else for Brad?
You know, I just want to say, I walked a lot on the Second Street and First Street and John up there and all these places this week looking at road issues and ditch issues. So, it's just not around my house.
We do give you credit for it, yes. We're giving you trouble.
Teasing is totally just because he has walked with his daughter and good family time. I, I always like giving him a good rip.
Anything else, Brad?
That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. We'll go ahead to Chief Hottishell.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First thing I have this evening is the monthly report from June. Nothing awfully remarkable there. We had a few people come out and ride along, which was good.
Were those, some of those seven additional officers?
They, yeah. We, we actually implemented a program where part of our hiring process is to have the new officers come out and ride. So, you know, they can, they can see what we're about and we can kind of see what they're about, you know, a little bit different light. So, I think two or three of those was, were potential officer candidates, yeah.
Officer Weber doing well?
He is. He's transitioning over to the detective bureau pretty well. You know, he was deeply involved with the fleet maintenance. So, it's taken a while to kind of wean him away from that, and we moved that over to Officer Hunger. So, although he doesn't really know a lot about cars, he, he can manage the program. So, it's taken a minute though to get that moved over.
Are you up to full staff now? Are you up to full staff now?
We are not, actually, nor will we be after this. At the, I guess, two meetings ago, when we, when we did the hiring of two guys, one of them, actually, both of them accepted the job, and one of them, the day after he accepted it, declined it and went somewhere else. So that, that put us right back to.
Right back to square one.
About where we were, so. After we do this next item, we'll still be two down, but we're in the middle of the process and hopefully we'll get up to speed pretty quick.
I see you have had seven ride-alongs in June, and Karen rides seven times?
She, she did, right.
Every time I got pulled over?
She enjoys it, even, even with all the vacation time and everything, she.
Amazing that she can work into her schedule.
Right.
Here you thought I didn't have time.
Actually, I haven't seen you out, Mr. Ock, is there?
Wow.
Well, 'cause you don't drive around his neighborhood.
You don't drive around my neighborhood.
Just note that that wasn't me.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to talk my daughter into riding along.
That would be great.
You know what, they, it really is a great program. You really do learn a lot.
I think I did twenty years ago what I don't remember.
It's a lot different.
Things are a little different now.
They, you no longer the crank cars, they actually.
No, we don't have to crank up the siren or anything.
Really?
You don't have to feed them hay or nothing.
No, really?
And the lights have multiple colors now.
I don't remember the hours we spent talking about putting video cameras and how progressive that was to put a camera in a car, my goodness.
Any questions on the monthly report?
No, sorry, Mayor, we're out of control.
We're gonna move on.
The second thing I have is approval to hire Corey Mills as a police officer. Corey has pretty good experience as a military police officer with the National Guard since two thousand and ten. Went to the academy September two thousand and thirteen and was out April two thousand and fourteen. And is very excited about his opportunity to come to work here, and I don't think he's going to decline tomorrow.
Is he from the community?
He is not.
Isn't he from Winfield?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
He graduated from Winfield High School.
Yeah, the, Karen's looking for data on him. Yeah, I did receive a phone call from Randy. And I don't know if the other personnel committee members received a phone call about him before he came to the agenda, so. How's the cook doing? Has he, like, done a barbecue for the police department yet?
The cook is the guy that is now at Florissant.
Oh.
He's the one that didn't stay.
Didn't stay?
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the hire of Corey Mills as a police officer for seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents per hour with a start date of August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Alderman Kesslerlee, seconded by Alderman Sluter, to approve the hire of Corey Mills as a police officer at seventeen twenty-three per hour with a start date of August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerlee?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one exception. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I do not.
Mr. Greville?
Signs.
You're on.
I think I covered most of this in the public hearing portion of it. These are kind of a collection of different revisions to the sign code. The Jack's Report, which is attached and part of our packet online, basically let, goes through these various ones. Like I discussed in the public hearing, the canopy sign issue has been resolved specific to that property, but generally, it was an issue with regards to how tall it could be and, you know, where it could be located. And that was something that planning zoning brought up, because that issue was brought up. We took out the forty-five day limitation on window signs and just said that they have to be maintained in good repair. Shall be maintained in good repair, so the remaining forty-five days has been removed from there. The ninety days on the temporary signs, the real estate signs has been removed as well. That's probably the most significant change, and like I said, that was just applying our sign code that was very difficult to enforce. However, we also have added a section with regards to those signs. Any temporary flag saying sign not maintained should be subject to the enforcement section of the City of Warrenton Code. So what we're going to, you know, we can't regulate content anymore. Our code has completely gone away from content, and that's where some of these gaps were left. And so now we really have gotten away from a time limitation of ninety days, 'cause real estate signs fall into that same category, which is a content regulation saying you're a real estate sign, you're not one, and really just focus on maintaining good repair. It has not created sign-a-get-'em yet. I mean, it's been, there's a lot of signs out there, but, you know, it's one of those things that I think we just have to continue to work with after a circuit court appeals opinion regarding content regulations.
Let me ask you some questions. So did any change in this ordinance impact when people put garage sale signs out?
No.
So, and did any, this change when people are putting signs out on the corner of forty-seven and Main? So there's a variety of signs, non-political, that are put up on a regular basis, be it this church function?
Well, there, there is the.
Are they impacted by this?
The banner sign is impacted by it, and I gotta look and find where that is, that section is.
I believe it doesn't require a permit anymore.
Okay, that's, that was my other question. So if, if the guys from picket organization are gonna have a pancake breakfast and they wanna put a sign on that and they get the property owner's permission, they're not required to get a permit anymore?
Correct.
Okay, and so if the church is advertising Vacation Bible School on that property, that's not required?
Correct.
Okay, so this really frees up some of the issues that I get a lot of complaints from people about.
But it also opens up, anybody wants to put a banner sign that says, you know, my neighbor is a sex offender or whatnot, that opens that up as well. That issue up as well, so it's always a double-edged sword with the signs.
They still have to meet the size requirement.
So there's, there's a size requirement issue that's still there?
Yes.
And so the city is basically taking the position, you put the sign up, as long as the size is right and it's not sitting on somebody's private property, that we're not gonna really hassle with it unless it's not maintained?
Correct. It becomes a public safety issue or whatnot, or, I mean, you know, there's always a question of if the content becomes explicit and it becomes a public nuisance. But yeah, essentially, it is, signs are pretty much, you know, if they're well-maintained and they're in compliance with the code, they do no longer require a permit, they no longer require any of the other.
And we're talking primarily ground signs, so this isn't allowing additional building signs?
No, absolutely not.
That's still, that's on the code as it was.
This is really our, the signs we deal with most on a day-in, a day-out basis. This is not pole signs and the different signs that typically businesses use. Now, some businesses do use the banner signs for specials or whatnot, and some for advertising, but, you know, that's probably more local businesses that do that than.
So if, if I have a business and I'm doing a barbecue special that day, nothing's prohibiting me from going out and putting in the front of my business a yards-type sign?
Correct.
That says, today's special is?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to assume that this will pass, and if so, this is a great opportunity for us to communicate with our friends and neighbors in the community that we've made unhappy over the past six months or so. Is there any way that we can send out just a flyer to the real estate brokers in town?
Sure.
To explain the change? You know, the, the big thing was the ninety-day temporary sign, have to get a read permit. I think that would go a long way to say we're listening.
Sure, we can do that.
And I think I asked the questions, 'cause I think most people don't, to Karen's point, most people don't see the changes, because they don't go on the website, see the public hearing notices, they don't go to the meeting, they don't watch it. And this is a pretty substantial change for a lot of organizations and groups that have wrestled with these issues in the past. You know, primarily, my experience is church organizations or, or paternal organizations that do, you know, all sorts of little fundraisers. This will significantly impact them also.
And my experience is the real estate brokers.
Or sometimes when we call upon the help of our local paper that helps get that out there.
But even that, they don't always read it.
They don't always, but a lot, vast majority of them do, 'cause they have advertisements in there and will be it, and they also watch.
Put it in bold print.
Anything else, Counselor?
Nope, that's it, unless you guys have any other questions or ordinance.
Mr. Greville?
No.
I'm ready to move on to bills to ordinances, Bill number fifty-one dash fourteen.
Call for the first reading of Bill number fifty-one fourteen.
Second?
Second.
Sorry.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
I will second that, Mayor.
All right, motion by Alderman Kesslerlee, seconded by Alderman Sluter for first reading of Bill number fifty-one dash fourteen.
In ordinance amending section four-two-five point zero-nine-zero, standards for signs of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Call for a second final reading of passage of Bill number fifty-one dash fourteen.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dreyer, seconded by Alderman Kesslerlee for second and final reading and passage of Bill number fifty-one dash fourteen.
In ordinance amending section four-two-five point zero-nine-zero, standards for signs of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerlee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one exception. I need a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss personnel.
So must.
Motion made by Alderman Kesslerlee, seconded by Alderman Sluter to adjourn the executive session to discuss personnel. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sluter?
Yes.
Alder Person Kesslerlee?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero. We're adjourned.